It's six o'clock and I'm calling the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of May 2nd, 2024 to order. May we begin with roll call?
Mr. Chairman, uh, can you do that now?
Here.
Pranam Kathan?
Present.
Cindy Ikantu?
Here.
Manuel A. Rangel?
Here.
Johnny M. Narvai?
Present.
Jean Del Maris?
Present.
Uh, Regina Portillo? Daniel Laza de Paz?
Here.
And Adolfo G. Martinez. For the record, you do have one.
Thank you. Uh, may we have a motion to excuse the Commissioner Portillo?
Motion to excuse.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Uh, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to approval, consider approval of minutes of regular meeting of April 18th, 2024. Second. You have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Uh, citizen comments? I believe I have two, but they're for specific items. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, we don't have any other.
Okay. Opening up the public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance. Item 6A, amending section 24 dot 65 dot 0 of the Land Development Code by adding subsection B titled Schools and Parks, prohibiting the park, the parking or storing of any commercial vehicle which exceeds one ton and manufacturer's gross vehicle weight rating, or that has more than two axles within 500 feet of any public or private elementary or secondary school, park, or public playground, providing that this ordinance shall be commutative, providing a survivability clause, providing for publication, and declaring an effective date.
Uh, good, good evening again. The representative from Legal will be here to give a presentation.
I mean, I, so Xavier Charles from the City Attorney's Office, um, you know, I think the, the ordinance here is pretty self-explanatory.
Chairman, if I have a point of order, we need to open the public hearing. So motion of a public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Proceed, sir.
Sorry. Thank you. No, no, I apologize. Uh, again, so Xavier Charles from the City Attorney's Office. I just hear answer any questions on, if, if the commission has any as far as this, this, uh, ordinance amendment is concerned. It's, um, you know, essentially self-explanatory. It's an, uh, ordinance amendment to a previous ordinance, uh, aiming at reducing tractor-trailer commercial type traffic near schools and parks.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, to, is this your recommendation, Legal's recommendation?
It, it, it's not so much a recommendation. I mean, it, it's, it's an ordinance that was drafted by our office. It was a directive from City Council. Um, so we, we, I mean, to say that, you know, we didn't, it didn't derive from our office, but it, it's a, it was a directive. Uh, I guess, uh, the City Council voted at a meeting to, uh, to draft this ordinance, um, which we did. So, I mean, staff does support the, the ordinance. Um, but that, that's essentially where it's at.
But, I mean, so Legal has reviewed it and they wrote it.
Yes, yes, we, we reviewed it. Yes, legally, uh, we, we've drafted it. We reviewed it. Uh, this is the legal mechanism coming to the Planning and Zoning Commission because it does regulate land use. Um, and from here, if it's passed, it would go to City Council for, for, uh, public hearing intra, uh, intra-ordinance and then for final, for final reading.
That was another question. So it comes here because it affects the land development.
Yes, correct. So this is, this is the first step in the process.
Thank you.
And that was gonna be my second question. Okay, you answered that one. Um, and the other, I see that what changed was, uh, or added here is the exceptions, right?
Correct. There, there were some exceptions that were added to, uh, from the original ordinance. Also, the, the distance was reduced from a thousand to 500 feet.
Okay.
Is there any particular reason why that was reduced?
Um, just, just to not make it as, as restrictive, um, obviously, you know, Laredo is, is the biggest land port in, in the United States, so, uh, the thousand feet, you know, we, we thought might have been a little too, too restrictive. Uh, so it, it was lowered down to 500 feet.
And, and another thing, I have an observation on letter C. Letter C, it says, "The landowner or developer agrees to not allow tractor-trailers from entering a school zone from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM excluding weekends, holidays, and school breaks." Um, I really think it's very extensive, okay? From 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Um, as you said, we are the biggest land port in, uh, America Latina, you know? And from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM and telling them not to make business, I don't think it's just. I don't know if we could suggest maybe modifying it on like, uh, pick up and drop off times where the schools are. Um, because I understand, right, that we need to be proactive, right? And, and, and I thank the legal department and everybody that is in the city trying to do this. Uh, I know that we are, uh, number one, we are always blocked and we don't like change, right? But, um, the city is growing and to have a good policy for development is the key here, right? And I, and I, I'm for it, but I do think there has to be, um, exceptions. Like you said, like the buffer, one of them was a buffer. I don't know if everybody read them. Did, did everybody read them? Yes? One, one was a buffer. The other one was an alternative method to enter. Uh, the, the time, I know it's gonna be an issue because me as a representative of the, of the District 7, where all the warehouses are there, right, is a lot, a long time, you know? Basically, the peak hour is from 2:00 to 4:00, right? And you're telling them, what, what is it, like 12 hours? That's de seis a seis, son doce horas, no? And I just wanted, uh, to point out that as a consideration. And also, I know there's a situation right now that is happening right now in District 7. And also District 7, it has a history of poor planning and we're paying the price, right? Because as we are growing so fast, we are having a lot of industrial parks and residential, um, areas also, right? So I'm trying to try, translate my Spanish to English, you know? But, but, um, we do not have, uh, a lot of industrial collectors where residential are, or where residential development is. So I think we, this is a good start. Yes, it is a good start. But we do need to have a little bit more consideration with the, I think, the hours. That, that's the main area.
Well, I think in response, I, I think that this, so the ordinance in itself is, is to restrict this traffic entirely, right? And, and these exceptions are, would allow for these businesses to operate in some capacity as opposed to not at all, right?
Yes, yes, but this is for new. It doesn't, it doesn't state where it says it's for a new, uh, new development.
Right.
Right? It, it doesn't state it's for a new development, right?
It, it would be primarily geared towards the development.
Dear, dear towards new development.
If I may, but this is an exception. This means that traffic and mobility is allowed during those hours. Is that correct?
No, no, on, on, on the contrary, on the contrary, they, these, uh, so the, the ordinance as it's written doesn't allow it at all, but an exception would be if the developer agrees to limit their traffic outside the scope of those hours.
Exactly. So if the developer in the new development says, "I'm going to limit access. This is going to be residential," or it's gonna be something that's completely different and he's not gonna allow truck traffic to run through his subdivision, then that would be all right. But what you're saying here is that
You do not allow.
The existing right now is spoken to in, in other, uh, exceptions down here. Does not apply to commercial vehicles delivering goods to good stores. Businesses that already have been in operation or landowners are platted industrial development before the passage of the section may continue to operate under non-conforming status.
Correct. And, and this is, yeah, and this isn't meant to, to, to limit, right, the, the day-to-day traffic of, of delivering goods and whatnot. It's more, it's more towards the, the parking and the storage.
Parking and storage of it, not necessarily the transient mobility.
Correct, correct, correct. It's, it's more towards the parking and the storage, uh, of, of these type of vehicles.
So in an area where a landowner or developer agrees not to allow tractor, tractor-trailers from entering the school zone, then storage and, uh, parking would be permissible?
Correct.
Okay.
So this is, this is a public hearing. I do have two, uh, comment cards. I do have Mr. Kenneth Valls.
Um, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, Ken Valls here on behalf of, uh, the United Independent School District. Um, as is indicated, this is a, uh, an ordinance having to do with schools and parks. Um, and the United Independent School District is, uh, very concerned with the traffic patterns, um, around their schools. We've been here several times, uh, before the, uh, commission, uh, with respect to that and also, uh, in front of, of City Council. I'm a little, at a little bit of a disadvantage because the, uh, meeting agenda just had the, um, summary of what was gonna be the, in the ordinance. Um, and I was wondering if I could be given a copy of the ordinance that's being considered or if it could be put up on the screen. Um, but, uh, having heard some of the comments that were, uh, going on right now, uh, it, it seems to me that in fact, this ordinance would, would most likely apply to future development.
That is right.
And it sounds like these, um, exceptions are, you would be able to use this property, uh, for commercial if you satisfied one of these other criteria. If you had, um, a school with, with a road in front of it and this other property within 500 feet, but you had an alternative, uh, access or you were gonna, uh, limit the traffic. Um, but...
No, it's not.
That's the same, that's the same. The same caption that you're looking at on the agenda.
Uh, because it, I, I noticed that you said it was A, B, and C.
There's A, B, C, D, and E.
First five.
That's not what's on...
The agenda?
Agenda.
Because the agenda, it just has the caption. The full ordinance is not on the, on not, on the agenda itself. It's in, within the packet.
All right.
Can we get him a copy of that?
I can have a copy.
Okay.
I was gonna take a picture.
Thank you very much. So just looking at this...
A says a buffer.
Correct. Uh, O is created where the city of Laredo believes adequate to ensure safety. So it's giving the professionals within the city of Laredo to make some determinations and give it some control without. I think that's good. The landowner developer has an alternative method of ingress and egress so that the area, the, the street in front of the school would, would not be the primary area that's gonna be, being used to support this commercial traffic. Um, the landowner agrees, uh, not to, or developer agrees not to allow the tractor-trailers from entering school zone 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Businesses that have already been in operation or landowners that have been platted for industrial development before the passage of section B1 may continue to operate under non-conforming use status. So anything that's already on the ground would can continue to operate. So I think that, that you're gonna be protected quite a bit. The only thing that I would change here is that it says landowners that have been platted for industrial development. The word platted, the, the plating process has three, as you know, three distinct phases. Preliminary plat, um, and once you get your preliminary plat, there could be substantial changes after that. In fact, you get your comments back, um, from the city and you, you, you address those comments. Uh, then you have final plat, but the, the culmination of the plating process is when you receive the, um, letters of acceptance by the city of Laredo, making sure that everything's been constructed properly. Um, and then you have all the department heads sign off. Because it's only saying platted and not saying the preliminary plat or, or the, um, final plat or the finally recorded plat, I would just suggest making the change there saying have been, uh, or have received a final, uh, finally recorded, uh, uh, plating. So that we know that it's reached its culmination. It's, there aren't gonna be any further changes. It's been constructed or it's been inspected by the city. And because, well, I don't wanna make, cast aspersions towards lawyers, but, um, if you have a term that's not fully defined and that term platted can be interpreted three different ways because there's three different sections. Um, I think that it might just be a little bit clearer if you, if it's clear that it's, if it's reached the final recording stage. Um, but that would, I think this is a great ordinance. Um, Mr. Rangel is also here representing, um, UISD. He can speak a little bit more towards, um, the fact that it's the time period during which students are coming and going into the school district, um, is, is, uh, much more varied than just a few hours because some of the buses come in very early in the morning to, to drop off the kids. Um, and then we have kids that stay at these schools for, uh, extracurricular activities. Um, and so he might be able to address that very quickly. But we applaud the city of Laredo and the, um, Planning and Zoning Commission for looking very closely at these matters and for working, extending the hand out to the district and inviting us to this meeting tonight and allowing us to make these comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Rangel?
Good evening, members of Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission, Honorable Commissioners. My name is Enrique Rangel. For the record, uh, I'm Assistant Superintendent for United Independent School District. I oversee facilities, uh, planning, construction, and operations. So, uh, in, in basic, uh, uh, explanation, I think, uh, the legalities, Mr. Kenny Valls, uh, went into a lot of detail. Uh, but, uh, you know, we, we did not receive, uh, the entire proposal or ordinance, so we didn't have that benefit to provide more input on a timely basis. But, uh, I am here to speak on behalf of the United ISD Administration. We're having a major event this evening, uh, celebrating the years of service for our teachers, uh, going from 10, 15, up to 40 years. So it's a very special, uh, annual event where we celebrate all our staff, especially our teachers, but also all our auxiliary personnel. And that's being held, started at, at six o'clock. So our apologies from the top administration why they cannot be here. So I was, uh, volunteered. I'm in your place. Voluntold.
Voluntold. Voluntold.
Yes, but, uh, basically, as like Mr. Valls mentioned, we have been here before. Uh, as we have been building many schools, as, uh, everybody knows, as well as, uh, plating. We've been considering, uh, and, uh, to reiterate the point that Mr. Valls made, uh, the administration believes this is a great, a great step in the right direction. Uh, we, uh, are in full support of this city ordinance. Uh, we believe it's, uh, gonna be very beneficial. We're concerned about the exponential growth. Laredo's always had, obviously, a lot of, uh, traffic. And the city has done a great job in the past in designated areas for truck traffic through, uh, limited arteries that we have throughout the city, uh, and designated truck, truck routes. Uh, many of them, uh, really in the path of our schools. This is also very good for other, uh, purposes, like it, it not only benefits school districts, but like it's mentioned there on the ordinance, city parks, uh, recreation centers, which the city has many throughout the area, where many times on weekends, but also during holidays, early release. Uh, anytime after 2:30 or 3:00, there's thousands of children walking through those areas, going to the parks. So it's a definite, uh, benefit. Uh, we believe this would be a, a very beneficial zoning or land development, uh, ordinance. Uh, and the fact that it's, uh, towards a future development, that's a great, great, uh, benefit. And, uh, we do, uh, support this fully. Um, we don't have all the details, but in concept, overall, it feels very good for all schools, as well as Laredo Independent School District, as well as United. All the private schools, the, the majority are also located within very heavy traffic, uh, areas. So that would benefit, uh, thousands, thousands of students. On our behalf, uh, from the administration, uh, we have over 40,000 students and many of them, uh, are, they, they walk to every day. It's not only parents going into the campuses, but, uh, I would venture to say at least 15,000 to 20,000 students that are daily walking, uh, as you see many, uh, middle schools, especially high school, the upper grades of elementary schools. Uh, early, uh, uh, early grades, I mean, 95% obviously, from pre-K to third grade, uh, they, uh, they're dropped off and picked up by their parents or probably mainly grandparents do a lot of that, uh, but...
I resemble that remark.
So it is, uh, uh, difficult to, and we work with the city traffic safety department as we have, uh, built and modified a lot of our, uh, school campuses. Uh, so we have a great working relationship, uh, with them, with the city traffic, city engineering. And we try to locate schools within residential areas. And so now, like, really for the last 15 years, that's been always our emphasis, working with the planning department of the city as well as the county. So, uh, I believe, uh, it's difficult sometimes to, uh, use examples of our campuses that are there, have been there 40, 50 years, uh, located on major tour, tour offers or collectors that back then were very small, uh, very, uh, low traffic streets. Uh, and now they've become surrounded by major traffic. But I think, uh, it's been an excellent planning, uh, planning, uh, master plan has been developed because a lot of these areas are already, uh, directing traffic away from those. They're very limited, restricted. Uh, trucks are not allowed in many of these, uh, major avenues where we, we and other districts have campuses. Um, I don't know exactly, uh, like I mentioned, all the details, but, uh, and what I, uh, heard in the comments by the Commissioners, as well as Mr. Valls, it appears to us and the administration that this would be a, a very good, uh, development ordinance. Uh, we're here to, uh, express our gratitude in, in, but being brought on this, uh, particular ordinance from the City Council, uh, which we've had meetings with them concerning this particular issue. Uh, I can't speak on behalf of, uh, other campuses where, for other districts, but for United ISD perspective. Uh, and there are some concerns in some, as you always mentioned, but I think we need to look, start and look forward.
Forward.
And, and avoid mistakes or bad situations that have been, uh, uh, developing over the years. Uh, it's difficult because of the city has been growing, uh, very fast. When I remember, uh, 10, 15 years ago, Laredo was probably one of the fastest cities in the state of Texas, uh, as well as student, uh, enrollment. What happens many times in our campuses is that, uh, not only is it walkers, uh, walk, students who walk to campuses, but also throughout the day, we have many school buses. Uh, it's not only between 6:30, 7:00 to 8:00, 8:30, 8:45, high schools, but also throughout the day, we have a extensive number of, uh, school buses that go pick up students all through hour to the day because they go through events, activities throughout the city or to other districts or out of town. Uh, there's constant traffic. Uh, not only in the high schools and, and middle schools, also in the elementary schools. They have, uh, a harder curriculum.
If, I mean, I'm sorry, I think we're, we're way beyond the, the three minutes.
Okay, I apologize. I was gonna ask, is it, what's the limit?
It's three minutes.
I belong to, uh, kind of...
You took a minute, really, I do, UID and... All of them.
I apologize.
Thank you very much for the whole one.
Just thank you all for, uh, bringing this to the table to consider it and, uh, we're in full support of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question as well.
So...
I do have a question.
Oh, oh, well, I was just gonna say, so was there input from the school on these exceptions for the hours that, as they were mentioning?
No, no, they, they give their support from, from afar, but this, this was drafted by
By Legal.
Well, independent. Through our office and, through the departments.
Mr. Chairman, the, the question that, uh, that the counselor had for, uh, exception D with the, with respect to the recorded plat.
Right.
The lan, the language you want in there, Mr. Valls, is, uh, landowners that have a final recorded plat?
That's correct.
Correct.
And, and we, we would agree with that. And I think if, if, if the commission does approve of this, I think if you can make that with the amendment to, when we take it to council, we can change that language to where, uh, landowners that have received a final plat. Right. And I think that we're recorded. Final recorded plat, yes.
Because that's a process that we don't, we don't get to see once, once we approve the final plat.
Correct, and, and I think we...
Recreation happens only with the chair and the interim planning director. Mr. Chairman, it's, it's been said that, uh, if you cross a godfather and a lawyer, you get an offer that you can't understand.
That's correct.
I wanted to make sure we got the language in the way you wanted it.
The, the confusion sometimes i- is caused by the fact that you have a final plat, uh, but it's not really final until it's reached its final recorded plat.
That is right.
Thank you.
Fair enough.
There any, any other questions or comments that would leave your, all you need is a recommendation from, from us?
Yes, if there's a majority recommendation, move forward to City Council. That's, that's all that's needed.
Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we close a public hearing and introduce the ordinance as amended with the language for, uh,
D?
D, item two, exceptions, uh, letter D. Second, four, final recorded plat.
Final recorded plat.
We have a motion and a second, all in, uh, by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Thank you, Legal. And thank you.
Go through the guest stuff.
Moving on to consideration of the following preliminary plats and preliminary replats. We do have two communications for item 7A and 7B to postpone time uncertain. Uh, may I have a motion to?
Motion to table?
Postpone.
Postpone time?
Uncertain.
Uncertain. Um, 6A, 6B?
No, 7A, 7B.
7A, 7B, sorry.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
We need to read them, eh? Take it. We need to read them?
Do, do we have to read them if they're gonna table them?
No.
The tabling stops all discussion and postponing does the same.
Okay.
Moving on to item 7C. Preliminary consideration of the replat of the remainder of track seven, Las Blancas subdivision into lots 7A, 7B, and 7C, block one, Las Blancas subdivision, and the grant to a variance to allow a dead-end street to exceed the 500-foot threshold from 500 feet to 580 feet pursuant to 3-2J subdivision ordinance. The tent is industrial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is a hallmark engineer is Porres Nance Engineering. The proposed use is industrial and the zoning for this three lot development is M1. Location view. Area view. The plat and the proposed, uh, replat. Comments from planning. Fire. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Wayne Nance with Porres Engineering. We agree with all the comments. Were there any questions you might have? Are there any questions for the engineer?
No, not from my part.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion two, two is subject to comment.
Second.
Just hope they will.
So we have a second?
Yes. Uh, we could please have in the motion?
Oh, the variance.
If it includes...
All the variance.
Yeah. If you want the variance to approve or not.
Yes.
So, we have a motion.
Motion to approve and to approve the var, variance, var...
Variants.
Variants.
We have a motion by Commissioner Saipas and a second by Commissioner Bernardes. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item 7D. Preliminary consideration of the plat of Ela Dn subdivision, unit 24. The tent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is Dimosa, A Texas General Partnership. Uh, engineer is Porres Nance Engineering. Proposed use is residential and the zoning for this 127 lot development is R1, R1MH. Location view. Area view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Fire and the proposed motion.
Thank you. Wayne Nance, Porres Engineering.
Wayne Nance, Porres Engineering. We agree with comments on this one as well. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve, subject to comments?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Saabas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to review and consideration of following vacating plaits. Item eight A, considering to vacate Pinnacle FM fourteen seventy-two billboard number two, plat has recorded on October twentieth, twenty twenty-three in volume forty-one, page ninety-one of Webb County plat records.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is FM fourteen seventy-two Investments, engineer Savio Engineering Associates, proposed use is, is commercial. And the zoning for this one lot development is M one. Location view. Area view. The recorded plat. And the proposed motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, PNC Commission. My name is Victor Gnatis of Savio Engineering. I'm, I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
No questions.
No.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Motion to.
We have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Rangel, second by Commissioner Saabas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to consideration of the following final plaits and final replats. If there are no objections, um, can we hear items, uh?
Motion to.
Nine A, nine B. Yeah, a motion and a second by Commissioner Saabas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Now we see. Motion.
Motion to approve, nine A, nine B.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Benares. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to reconsideration of the following final plaits and final.
You wanna go ahead and read them?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yes, of course. For the record, uh, final consideration of the replat of lot one, lot two, lot three, lot three of Pinnacle Industrial Center FM fourteen seventy-two, unit thirteen into lot one A and lot two A, lot three of Pinnacle Industry Center FM fourteen seventy-two, unit thirteen. Final consideration of plat of lot, uh, number th- B three, W Tangecitos Partnership, number two subdivision, approved.
Thank you. Moving on to reconsideration of the following final plaits and final replats. Item ten A is a final reconsideration of the plat of Porcuande subdivision phase two, unit two, the tent is industrial. The purpose of this reconsideration is to shift the northern boundary line of lot one, block three and add an off-site utility eastman. This is also a final.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.